So please come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Deion.
Here.
Randall Hulps?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Carl Stone?
Here.
Deion Straylin?
Here.
How can he not on yet, but he should be during the meeting?
All right. City Council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively and speaking up to address incivility. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV, so anyone who wishes to speak to council, please approach that microphone, podium and microphone before speaking, so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda? So move. Vince Straylin, Carl Stone, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
Brandon Horace, Carl Stone, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we'll have a review of the indoor recreation aquatic center change order summary. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site. Actually, I would like to turn the floor to Mr. Bob Deion Straylin, who can give an update on the administrative change order.
Welcome, Bob. Thanks for being here.
Before we actually get into the change orders, I thought I'd just give you a little brief update on where they are on the project and schedule-wise. So almost all of the footings underground are in place. Most of the underground utilities, all the storm sewer, all the sanitary sewer onsite is in place. They've got much part of the water made in place. You've seen over the last few weeks, the walls are starting to go up. So we anticipate that sometime, it was supposed to be next week, it's now been pushed back a couple of weeks. They'll be getting delivery of the steel, so you'll start to see the structure framing up here, probably starting the week of the 10th of November. They've got part of the park, east parking lot done, so they're moving along. Right now, the weather in June and July didn't really help, from an overall schedule perspective, it looks like they're going to be able to get closed in some critical portions of the rec center, the pool and some of the core area, so they'll be able to work through the winter. And that's really the key element. The areas that they have the most work to do are what they're really going to get closed in, so they can work through the winter and stay on schedule. There'll be some areas, like the gymnasium areas, that they won't get closed in, but the amount of work in those areas is less, and so they don't really need to work in the winter in those areas. So right now, it looks like, just big picture, looking forward, the goal is to have the project substantially completion in March of 2027 and finished in July 2027. It looks like they're roughly on schedule. We've had to change some things around, but overall, I think things are really, it looks like we're there. The real key is, will the weather hold long enough to get some parts of it closed in, so they can work through the winter? Because if they lose the winter work, then it's going to be very difficult for them to make it up. So I think with the steel delivery and everything on where it is now, it looks like we need about a month. So normally, in around, in central Iowa, we can work into, up to close to Christmas before we really have to start closing it down for the winter. So it looks like we're okay there. When I was here a couple of months ago, we talked about a change order for policy for small changes. And so the council approved the policy to set up the project management committee, which consists of city administrator, council member Butler, and myself. So far, we've approved nineteen individual modifications for ten change orders. And a lot of those have come out of what they call the shop drawing review phase. So when a project starts, the contractor sends in more detailed drawings to kind of show exactly what they're going to construct, what they're going to provide. And it's during that stage, on any major building project, where typically, if there's some coordination issues or somebody requests a modification, a lot of those come in that stage of the process. And we're now somewhere around 375 of the estimated 425 submittals have been processed by the architect. So that stage of his winding down, and what we're seeing is that those kind of initial changes, I mentioned earlier when I was here in August, that there's usually a flurry at the beginning and then it kind of slows down. We're already seeing that, because they get through more and more of those modifications. So there'll be changes. And we had one that came up today, where they're digging along and all of a sudden, they find a pocket of bad soil. Isn't much bigger than half the council table, but it's right where the footing goes, and so we need to address those kind of things. So there's those kind of things that come up from time to time during construction of the project. The original authorization for the committee was no individual change more than $20,000 and aggregate of $100,000. We're now just approaching $87,000 of that authorization. And so it's time to come back to the council and see what the council's flavor is as far as where we are on that policy. I would tell you, it's been working very well. I think you get the opinion of council member Butler and the city administrator Nardini, but I think what we've done is we've accomplished the goal. We've kept the project moving, and we have been able to burden the council with change orders every meeting. And so it allows us to move things along, avoids any kind of delay that the contractor might, you know, say is there as a result of us not being able to react in a timely manner. So I think the process is working very well. I think it's going to slow down as we sort of go forward. And some of the changes, like the one that came up today, you know, we just don't have a lot of time to react to, because if they don't, if we don't get something addressed, then they're going to stop and wait for a council meeting. And that just doesn't work very well on the project. So overall, we haven't had anything since the original dirt issue, change order two, that we talked about a couple of months ago. Everything that we've seen so far has been comfortably under the $20,000. So we have nineteen of the modifications that add up to about $87,000. So you can kind of see, we're somewhere in the upper $4,000 range for each of the individual modifications. What we do is we kind of group those together and do a change order every so often, so that we're not burdening the committee with nineteen changes. We've consolidated down to a total of ten change orders. And we probably are aware of this out on the horizon, maybe one or two more that, you know, that we'll need to address over the next few weeks. None of them are to the point where we need to take immediate action, except for the one bad dirt one that we, that came up today. So that's kind of where we are. We're approaching that limit of $100,000. That limit is three tenths of one percent, or about a third of a percent of the overall project cost. As I mentioned earlier when I was here, typically on a project like this, you would expect the overall changes from beginning to end, you know, almost always exceed one percent, typically in that two to three percent range. The contingency that the city included in the financing was three percent of the project cost, or $900,000. If you include the dirt amount that we approved in change order two, we're still about a little over six tenths of a percent. So I think where we are on the project, we're probably doing very well, probably running a little bit under what you would expect at this stage of the process, project as far as changes, but there'll be more. I would guess, you know, I think the item that the council or the city administrator Nardini will talk about is another authorization of up to $100,000, which would take the committee's authorization up to about two-thirds of a percent. And if you count the other change order, it would be one percent. I would anticipate this will take us probably well into next year sometime. So I think we're still doing well. I think, you know, things are going to slow down as far as the changes, but we're still going to have them. So that's kind of an overview of where we are on the project and where we are on the changes. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that council members may have.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody have any questions? A lot of good news there. Thank you. You got something, anything to add, Mike? Okay. Continue on to resolution number 6947, entitled resolution approving amendment for the project administration policy for the indoor recreation aquatic center project. Anything to add, Mike?
As far as the policy itself, the resolution that we have this evening, we have just a brief presentation on this, Mr. Mayor. And for those in attendance, those watching at home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a very brief presentation on this item. This evening, this resolution, what it would actually do would increase the authorization of the administrative policy change order committee for the rec center from $100,000 up to $200,000. As Bob stated, it's an additional $100,000. So Heidi, please go ahead, please. And I think as Bob said, typically, when you see projects of this size, they're typically in the total change orders between one to three percent. Right now, we're well below that three percent. The city has budgeted a maximum of three percent for this project. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. And again, I think this is the second last slide. So what we have again is just, what this resolution would do is to increase it up to a total of $200,000 from the $100,000 current limit. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Deion, Carl Stone, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6948, entitled resolution approving construction contract and bond for the indoor rec center sanitary sewer improvements. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor of Orange City, what this resolution would do was approve the construction contract, as well as a performance bond for the sanitary sewer improvements associated with the Pella Rec Center. Just a brief overview of this, what we have is the gravity main, where the private service line from the rec center is highlighted in blue, the lift station is in yellow. And the red highlighted area is the force main for the project. Now, as background on this, we do have a description of the project as well on the big board. On October 7th, we did award the contract, the on-track construction, the amount of $1,108,552. And the city attorney has reviewed the performance bond, as well as the construction contract this evening, and she has recommended approval of these documents. Staff is in agreement, and we also are recommending approval as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Vince Straylin, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes. Motion passed. Resolution number 6949, entitled resolution approving change order number one, final quantity adjustment and accepting the public improvements for the West Ninth Street improvements project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site. As Mayor of Orange stated, what this resolution would do was approve change order number one for our West Ninth Street improvement project, and also accept the public improvement for this project, which is mainly the storm sewer, as well as the paving for West Ninth Street. So this would be the green highlighted area for the street segment that we have up here. But we also have a description of the public improvements as well. It is important to note that Garden Associates believes the street was constructed in accordance with plans and specifications, and is substantially complete as well. Now, as far as the overall contract and the change order, it was a quantities adjustment for the change order. We do not have the summary up there, and I apologize for that, but we had a deduction in the quantities adjustment of $4,750. So with this change order number one, if council were to approve it, we'd have a final construction contract that would be right around $318,700. Now, and the engineering for the project was right around $66,000 for this project. So you look at a total project cost of about $384,000. As council is aware, we signed a development agreement with Pella Retail Management, which their financial contribution for this project totaled right at $220,000 on the $384,000 project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Once again, this accepts the public improvements, approves change order number one for the project, which was a deduction, quantities deduction of around $4,700, and all ultimately, as we said, affects the project. So with that, we are recommending approval this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Carl Stone, Vince Straylin, any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6950, entitled resolution accepting public improvements for the West Ninth Street sanitary sewer extension project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site. As Mayor of Orange stated, what we're talking about here is accepting the sanitary sewer line that's associated with this development on West Ninth Street. Basically, we're to highlight that sanitary sewer line and believe we have a manhole that was somewhere right up in here. The sanitary sewer extension was listed, it was right up this length. It's just shy of 600 millimeter feet on this. Garden Associates provided construction observation for the sanitary sewer project, and they believe it has been completed in accordance with plans and specifications, in accordance with city standards, rather. In addition, the contractor has submitted a maintenance bond for the improvement, as well as the staff, and the city attorney are recommending approval this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Brandon Horace, Carl Stone, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6951, entitled resolution authorizing temporary transfer of surplus funds from the Pella Municipal Electric Utility to the city of Pella. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor of Orange stated, what we're talking about is a temporary transfer this evening from the city's electric fund to the city's general fund to cover projects that have occurred in the last fiscal years. So that would be fiscal year 2025, as well as the current fiscal year. Now, anytime you look at a transfer from the city's electric utility to the general fund, we always want to take a look at the fund balance of the electric utility in accordance with industry standards. So at June 30th, 2025, we believe the audited financial results for the electric utility will have a fund balance of just shy of $15 million. If we were to look at the fund balance calculation based off industry standards for the American Public Power Association, their minimum fund balance calculation is somewhere just over $7 million. City staff and city administration has traditionally been at the $10 million level for that, and that's the calculation that we use for discussion purposes this evening. So if we looked at the $14.8 million at June 30th, 2025, city administration's recommendation of a minimum fund balance of $10 million, we have just shy of $4.8 million of surplus electric funds. So let's go ahead to the proposed transfer, Heidi, if we can. Now, what we have listed up on the board is a list of projects that council has approved, and these are all in various different stages of projects up here, but they total just shy of $985,000. So what our plan is, is to have this transfer made. This would be effective as of June 30th, 2025. And we'll evaluate if we'll need to issue bonds for these projects that we have listed up on the board. Again, we may be able to pay with it all out of cash. If we will, there will be no additional debt issues for this in this transfer. There'll be a separate resolution at that time with the resolution saying this will be a permanent transfer. If we have to issue debt, then we'll reimburse the electric utility for this transfer, but that determination will be made later this fiscal year on this as well. So once again, this transfer amount from the electric utility to the city's general fund is shy of $985,000 and be retroactive to June 30th, 2025 for the above listed projects up here on the big board. Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Deion, Carl Stone. Any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1077, entitled an ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Fox Ridge Urban Renewal Area in the city of Pella County of Marion, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Pella County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Fox Ridge Urban Renewal Area, the Fox Ridge Urban Renewal Plan. This is the third reading. Mike, walk us through it briefly.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief about that, Mr. Mayor. That was quite an introduction to the site. And as Mayor of Orange stated, what we're considering is ordinance this evening. And what the ordinance would do would set up a special district, and this is called the Fox Ridge Urban Renewal Plan District in here. And through this ordinance, what we would be able to do is capture the incremental property taxes that would be generated on the properties. So with this, the Fox Ridge development, when council approved the urban renewal plan for this development, it included both two families, as well as multifamily homes on here. So once those homes are constructed on here, we would be able to collect the property taxes collected from this district, the incremental district right here that we have, so the additional property taxes. Those taxes would be used for two purposes. Roughly about 33% of them are going to be used for the city's low and moderate income housing fund that we have. The remainder of those property taxes will go back to the developer to reimburse them for the public infrastructure for this development, which was just shy of $950,000. So Heidi, let's go ahead, please. Now, as council is aware, this ordinance that we're considering this evening, the urban renewal plan, with the development agreement as a whole, it is conditional upon the developer, upon, I should say, both Marion County and the Pella Schools agreeing to a five-year extension for the urban renewal plan. And that extension would be from 10 years up to 15 years. So our understanding, both entities will be considering the extension in November of this year, at least we're tentatively scheduled to have this in November of this year. So once again, this is the ordinance, this is the third reading, and it intended to allow the city to collect incremental property taxes from new homes that are built in the development, to be able to reimburse the developer for the cost of the public infrastructure for the development. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Brandon Horace, Carl Stone, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now I need a motion for approval of adoption of ordinance number 1077.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Vince Straylin, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills number 2185?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Brandon Horace, Vince Straylin, any discussion or questions? Kayla, in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall Hulps?
Yes.
Deion Straylin?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you would like to address this evening?
Go ahead, go ahead. Well, mine's pretty minor, but ran into a person on Broadway that has turkey vultures roosting in the backyard. And we had that before, what can we do to fix it? Do we do anything to fix it, or just wait till it got cold?
She's been shaky. If you could handle this one, as far as what was done, I believe that was up on West First Street, up at, uh, the, uh, West Palace, so.
Vultures are endangered. And so if you're going to do anything other than what's called harass them, in other words, put up an effigy, which means essentially kill one and hang it upside down in a tree, you need to get a couple permits. Not difficult, but kind of cumbersome. And honestly, it doesn't really work. I did that as a neighbor, not really as a city official, you know, for my neighbor. And we've worked through the process, but it is quite difficult to get rid of the vultures.
Cause it migrated out in some parts.
It migrated about mid-November this year. I've become like a vulture. I didn't want to, but yeah, this year, they're moving out about mid-November, and they won't be back until obviously next year, when it gets a little bit warmer. But they do tend to roost in the same spots, and it's kind of difficult to harass. Other than, you know, just put up the owls and fake effigies, which I put up on my neighbor's tree now, and it's not going to work for about two months straight now, so.
And that is not a dead one, though?
No, a fake one.
All right.
Oh, maybe.
Certainly isn't a new problem. We've heard this one every year for the last few years.
Thank you.
I'm just going to be a proud pop, uh, of several other band families here, but the Pella Beach marching band just had another great marching band season. Won all of it, I think, one, which was with much bigger bands. But just, we're proud of our kids, how hard they work, how well they represent our community. And I just love how talented this group of families and kids are.
And one more thing, they've invited to the 250 anniversary celebration in D.C.
Yeah, I saw that. There's like 250 members of the marching band, right? Something like that.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, you can hear them out there practicing every morning at seven o'clock. Takes a lot of dedication. Glad they're rewarded for it. Okay, anything else? All right. Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please come to that microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Dwight Young, 2509, School District. Concerning the former power plant property there on Los Cruces Street, what's the status of redoing that area?
I want to take that one longer.
Yeah, Mike and I just met on that project now. We are, the first step is going to be burying the conduit.
It's going to be what?
Burying the electrical lines that are ahead, and so we're waiting on materials to come in. But the project is moving forwards. We have a wonderful committee, and you know, it will be an amazing addition to our community once it's finished. It's taken a long time, Dwight, and you're so right, but we wanted to do it correctly because of the soil that we're working with.
Okay, so the plans are approved, and we have a contract out to do the work?
We don't have those things yet, but we have, the design is three quarters of the way completed. We have a very solid board of individuals working on this park. And city staff is moving along very nicely.
Do you have a plan on when it might be work started?
Well, it all depends on when we can get the conduit that it needs to encase the underground power lines. So that's the problem.
I imagine that it won't be done by two of time, I can imagine.
Don't I wish. I would love that, but I can't, I don't think so.
Unlikely at the present time.
At the present time, yes.
Not two, not two of time, 2026 anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. But again, this has been a project that we've measured twice and cut once on, because it is a very unique soil in that area. And as we heard from Bob too, when you build anything, you have to be sure that the ground beneath your feet is solid and safe, and that's what we've been.
Is this a two-stage project?
No, not really. It's.
One of those previous discussions are talking about doing it first and then upgrading it with restrooms and things.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, potentially, it could be. Yes, potentially.
All right. Well, thank you very much for wrapping on that.
Of course. Yeah. I mean, because of its location too, Dwight, we've had to do traffic studies, look at the streets, where the park will empty out from. It's been kind of complex in nature.
Well, thank you.
Of course. Thanks for asking.
I'll see. I had another thing, and I slipped my mind, but that's the way it goes, I guess. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to a policy. All right, seeing none, we will adjourn to policy and planning, a couple of discussions. One regarding amending municipal telecommunications utility rates. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what we have here is just two proposed changes to the city's telecommunications utility. These both deal with call-based phone systems that we have up here. As you can see, we have a current rate for each one of these as well as the proposed rates. So again, this is more of a housekeeping united that we have with the current rate ordinance. And we just wanted to make sure before this was presented for formal ordinance consideration that we address any questions that the council may have on this, on these two changes.
Yeah, it's like I said, I think it was just kind of a housekeeping cleanup deal, so I don't think there's any issues.
Okay. All righty, well, similarly, what we have here is we'd like to talk about vacation rates for utilities at the City of Pella. We have four services that have vacation rates, so I do the city code, it's not a norm where to go on vacation for a period of time. What we have is they can go down to minimum bills for the solid waste collection, pay two fifty, two dollars fifty cents per month. And then we also have a minimum bill of ten dollars per month for each Pella Fiber service that they could have. So those are three services that we've had. And like any ordinance, most people are very, they abide by the rules, and they notify us once they come back from vacation. But it's difficult, particularly on the solid waste collection, to find out some people when they're actually back from vacation and when they're actually using the service on it. And we've ran into some issues recently with a few, with a few customers, and as a result, what we would propose is eliminating the vacation rates period on it. And when people leave for a period of time, that they would just pay full rates for the utilities on this. And this is just because of issues that the city's had with vacation rates and people notifying the city when they return back from vacations. And so, again, before we present this as a formal consideration, we want to make sure we address any questions the council may have, and then also on this. So again, we're looking for feedback on this, Mr. Mayor.
What's the time, what's the timeframe now, if you're going to be gone a week or a month or?
All the above.
All, any, any length of time?
That's probably not so much the issues, the short vacations. And my answer is, most of the people that take advantage of this abide, notify the city when they come back and use the service. It's not the people that abide by the rules, it's the people that we've had issues with that are calling for the change. So again, this is from an administration point of view, the solid waste collection has been in the books for a number of years with the city. But now that we've added the telecommunications utilities, and if you look at with the telecom utility, we have rightfully thirty-two hundred customers on that as well in addition to just over five thousand electric customers with this. So there's a number of utility accounts that are more special exceptions that you have rights to stop service and start services without the ability to actually track when people are utilizing the service. It makes things difficult. And so our proposal is, because of past issues that we've had, we'd like to, our recommendation would be to remove the vacation rates.
And I made a question for you. I, I'm having a hard time fathoming that there's not technology that would mark when there's an uptick in getting herbs flowing over the wire, you know, but how is there not technology to manage that?
There is a communication issue for Doy staff and billing staff. And Doy helped me out on this, but with Pella Fiber, when someone comes back and utilizes the service, Doy and his staff have the ability to check accounts and see the services that they're using in real time. Our billing staff is not quite, we not be able to monitor that. And so the people that are authorizing the vacation rates for Pella Fiber are different from the people that are monitoring the usage. They almost have to be in communication or do these vacations continually.
So I understand the answer there. There is a way to monitor the flow of fiber use, but the communication between our departments isn't adequate to, to actually, you know, return the charge to active.
Yeah, and here just an ID for Pella Fiber, you know, when you look at the cost on it, if you did a cost benefit of this benefit that we have in the staff time that it would take to administer, it's questionable whether you would do it. Second of all, in the case of television services, if we don't get it right, we're paying for programming costs, which are pretty high on it if someone comes back. And again, this isn't for the typical person that utilizes vacation to do a very good job. It's for the few people that we have that push the rules. So that's on the Pella Fiber side. Solid waves collection, what's happened is we have individuals notify the city they're on vacation. We've looked up on the contractor, and they don't notify the city when they come back, and so they're not being billed the full rates for garbage collection.
That sounds more manual to me, the fiber one sounds, I would say more. To more of a policy standpoint for the city's overall utilities. And again, when you look at Pella Fiber, and thank goodness it's been successful on it, we're proud to have the customers we do, but it takes a lot of coordination to manage vacation rates on the system. Is there a, I'm no engineer, but you know, the community full of injured minds. Is there a process that it's off until they call billing to turn it back on?
What's that?
Is there a process to be had, there were the, the ones who aren't being as faithful to the policy have to call billing to let Doy know?
We don't have a way to monitor right now, and we have, I mean, that would be the next step. The cost to add that capability, if someone came back and started using internet, and we had tracked on it on there, then we're automatically kicking the billing on it out.
I just know there's so many alcohol snowbirds, but folks that want to enjoy our community part-time, it's a nice amenity, but yeah, I'm complacent with the issue, but there seems to be a solution there, but analyze the ones who need to be allowed.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, it's more of just a philosophical approach to the city utility accounts. And again, it's not the people that abide by the rules, that have rule changes, it's the people that, they, the few that push things. And so from our standpoint, that's what we look at, is really the cost benefit of offering the service on going down to minimum charges for people that may just know, or that currently don't have this in effect for either electric or water or wastewater.
May I add a couple comments?
What's the, yeah.
Well, I'm out of my Midwest sanitation, semi-retired. Couple scenarios to add to that since Dr. Carl Stone brought that up. As far as snowbirds go, like Mike said, ninety-nine percent, it's a, it's a clean, uh, cut and dried issue. The issue comes when it's last minute, and that information has to get to the city. The city has to get that information to Midwest sanitation, so you've got another layer there to, to address that. And, and that can happen both ways, both discontinuing service and turning service back on. And then you have the issue of snowbirds that all of a sudden, because of a family issue, they come back for two or three weeks. And then what? Uh, because, because they're generating trash and they put it out? And I want to add another scenario to Mike's comments, and that is, uh, the renter situation. When a tenant moves out and they cancel service, then the landlord goes in and he wants to do some cleaning. All of a sudden, there's no service there, and, and it creates up an issue to the city. First of all, to the, to the service provider, and then the city staff, and it, it just back flows back. So, so we've had numerous issues of that over the years. I just want to bring those up.
Yeah, the waves collection seems more capitalized, so I, I, that seems to be more cut and dry to me for this solution. But when it comes to the visual switching to happen.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I appreciate that, thanks for sharing.
But Doy, the television customers are able to, if they're gone, can get on their TV account, right? Remotely?
With some services, yeah.
Yeah.
And to make that happen, we have to turn it up to a certain speed, which we did as courtesy of, by anyway. With that speed, they can still come home and watch TV and be on the internet just like these that keep repeating.
All right, so staff is desiring to make this change, suspend the vacation rates. Do we want them to come back with an actual to vote on and do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Let's go ahead, Heidi. Okay, the last item that we have here is just our updates. We will be talking about water service lines very, in the very, very near future as well. As well, that's the lead water service line issue as well. Within the month of November, we'll have an update on the city's comprehensive plan. We also anticipate as a part of that, the council authorized a master plan for the parks as well. We're going to be considering an amendment for that master, park master plan as well. And then we'll also have additional work sessions on the proposed peddler solicitor permit changes as well. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our updates.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Brandon Horace, Carl Stone. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brad Hope?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Motion passed, we are.